It is six o'clock. We'll convene our meeting of the Sparta Town Council, Allegheny County Board of Commissioners and like to welcome everyone here. Nice. Good to see you full board on both sides and get into the meeting with the pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
Let me go ahead and make sure the Sparta Town Council took the order too.
We're ready for our meeting. Get ready to go.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just pray. Most kind gracious heavenly father, we thank you for allowing us this opportunity to meet with the community leadership. Dear lord, we just pray that you would be in the midst of the meeting tonight and just help us lead, guide and direct us in all that we do. And we pray that it's in the best interest of all citizens of the county. In this name I pray. Amen.
The manager has a comment or two to talk about our six-foot ordinance.
Sir, I just wanted to remind everyone of the governor's order number 147. Although nothing applies specifically to local government, it does identify state government. So in reading that, it basically identifies that face coverings when there are or may be within six feet of another person. It also refers to, it says, public face operations of state government agencies, the jurisdiction of the undersign must also follow the requirements for retail businesses established. So if you read that, it also identifies that face coverings shall be worn when they are or may be within six feet of another person. So as you look around the room, we have everyone spaced out hopefully accordingly. But I wanted to identify that to everyone tonight. There are exceptions and there's 11 of them, but the one exception that I think applies for this meeting is exception number six, which provides when given a speech for a broadcast or to an audience. So just wanted to bring everyone aware of that. Hopefully that will answer any questions that may apply to our meeting tonight.
Thanks, sir. First off, we have a public comment time here. If anyone from the audience wants to speak, feel free to come forth. Seeing none, we'll move on down to the presentations of newly formed Allegheny County Chamber of Economic Development. Mr. Ricky Brown.
Well, thank you all tonight, the council and the commissioners for allowing us to be here. And I'd also like to thank you for your financial support of the organizations working to make Allegheny County better. And I can assure you, we are not asking for any additional money tonight. Good time to bring the mic up, Bobby. We're not asking for any additional financial support here. It's just to bring you all up to date where we are. It's our pleasure to unveil a new and exciting direction for economic development and growth for our county. The last 10 months, a wide group of people representing many groups, including the town, the county, the chamber, SRC, BDC, TDA, the community college and others, have met to discuss how we can work together to better harness our energy and resources to help our county achieve much needed growth. These discussions included looking at the past, where we are now, and how best to go forward. You will see a summary of that work tonight. All know we live in an uncertain and challenging world. Within these dark clouds may lie an opportunity for us. They all have been reading about the potential migration from urban to rural. Must be ready if and when this opportunity comes. Have tremendous assets in our county. Low crime, outstanding medical and health services, very affordable real estate and low taxes. We have natural beauty without bounds, a great climate and tremendous outdoor opportunities for our tourists. We're close, within two hours of large urban areas which people want, with easy access to get there, including two airports to take you anywhere in the world. Have one of the best broadband infrastructures in the state. Ninety-one percent of our homes and businesses have access to at least one gigabyte of internet service. We have a strong culture and values embodied in our many churches and civic organizations. Our arts abound, and we have invested in our town through the water and the streetscape project. All this gives us the opportunity to attract more visitors, to become a retirement and second home Mecca, and to become a hub for telework and internet-based businesses and entrepreneurs. What we lack is a unifying organization to be focused on telling our story to the world and to support our existing industries, agriculture, service businesses and merchants to be more successful. Must work to ensure our community is economically viable and growing. Cannot achieve this by chance. Must purposely manage the process. And we believe what you will see tonight is the best path forward to allow us to utilize our resources better, to focus on what is required to do and achieve accountable results. I believe that we are at a crossroads to decide to make the future of Allegheny County and its citizens better and brighter. Will take the collaboration of all of us, the town, the county, our businesses and citizens to make it happen. There's always the potential of fear of growth and change. What I will submit to you is that the fear of stagnation and decline is far greater. Now I'll turn it over to Zach Bariclo to take you through our presentation and a summary of the work that's been going on now for 10 months. Thank you all very much for this time, and we look forward to taking any questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you very much. Zach?
Evening. Good to be with y'all. It's good to be with people. I haven't seen people in a long time in real person. So as Ricky mentioned, we had a group that started meeting. Actually, I was looking back at my notes. It's actually July of last year, so we're about a year from when we first started getting together. This group started convening. This group was made up of town, county, TDA, SRC, chamber, BDC and community college representatives. And the purpose of those convenings, which took place many times, over many months, over many hours per meeting, many of you were in those, was to look at our five-year economic development plan. We had a plan that was put in place in 2015, and all of us were curious how we were tracking with that plan, how it was going. We had about, it was a little over 80 objectives that were identified. I'm sorry, I feel like I've got my back to half of the group here. We had a little over 80 objectives that were sketched out in that economic development plan. And we were all curious how that was going. And one of the things that we realized pretty early in our discussions was that nobody really owned the plan. There wasn't one organization that really owned that plan and that was tracking how it was going. And we also had some obvious progress and some obvious challenges with implementing the plan. So what we decided to do was spend the next several months, the next several meetings, kind of peeling back the layers and looking at our situation there. And so what I'm going to share with you is a fraction of the total dialogue that took place, but five observations and one big conclusion. So Michael, if you don't mind, go to the next one. So one first observation is that, let's see if it goes. Maybe if you just click, I might, there you go. All right. There you go. So the first observation is that we have several agencies that contribute to economic development in Allegheny. It's certainly not just a county thing or a town thing. We have the county schools, we have the community college, we have the co-op extension, we have the SRC and the TDA and the chamber. There's a variety of agencies that contribute here. And if you go ahead to the next one, there, Michael, whoop, back, back one. There's no unifying accountable organization that was in place to track the progress of this plan. So that was the big observation that we had around the table. There's no one that we could go to and ask and have them say, yep, we're on track, we're running right down the list, here's our dashboard, here are our success indicators, here's how it's going. We didn't have that. And that's not to say that there wasn't progress, but we didn't have a singular dashboard or accountable agency to look at it. So how are all of these disparate agencies pulled together and aligned and aimed at economic development? If you go to the next one there, sorry, that's giving us trouble. The third observation that we had was that there's no one organization supporting the economic success of all. So this was a significant one, and we spent a lot of time on this. We actually mapped out and compared and contrasted the missions of the chamber commerce, SRC, the BDC, the TDA and the marketing program. And we analyzed who they were there to serve and how their services overlapped, trying to identify where we have kind of duplicatious services. And what we found was that the chamber of commerce was sort of limited in scope by its member focus. It's a membership-based organization. So by its statutes, it's supposed to provide unique services to its members and not necessarily the community at large. The SRC was limited in scope and its focus on Sparta and the main street corridor, not necessarily merchants that are out in the community, not beautification projects or special activities that were out in the community. So it was limited in scope. The TDA doesn't have any staff, as you know, it's just exclusively an occupancy tax grant-making institution. The BDC is a wonderful space and a wonderful asset that we have in our community, but has very limited staff and services. Furthermore, we identified that there were five or six unique groupings, and this is what you see on the screen here, five or six unique groupings of economic drivers in our community that there was, none of which were served by a single entity or in some cases, any entity, arguably. So our existing industry, our merchants, our tourism-related businesses, our farmers, our entrepreneurs, that question of, that came up in the group was who, who is it in our community that should be going to our existing industry and saying, thanks for being here, what do you need, how do we support you in remaining here and adding jobs to our community? Who is that person? And that kind of brings us to the next one as we looked at the question of who. Had some tough realities to look at. We have had a lot of turnover in key agency leadership roles and in direction in recent years. Just to share a few of those stats. So since adopting
For allowing us to be here. And I'd also like to thank you for your financial support of the organizations working to make Allegheny County better. And I can assure you, we are not asking for any additional money tonight. Good time to bring the mic up, Bobby. We're not asking for any additional financial support here. It's just to bring you all up to date where we are. It's our pleasure to unveil a new and exciting direction for economic development and growth for our county. The last 10 months, a wide group of people representing many groups, including the town, the county, the chamber, SRC, BDC, TDA, the community college, and others, have met to discuss how we can work together to better harness our energy and resources to help our county achieve much-needed growth. These discussions included looking at the past, where we are now, and how best to go forward. You will see a summary of that work tonight. All know we live in an uncertain and challenging world. Within these dark clouds may lie an opportunity for us. They all have been reading about the potential migration from urban to rural. Must be ready if and when this opportunity comes. Have tremendous assets in our county. Low crime, outstanding medical and health services, very affordable real estate and low taxes. We have natural beauty without bounds, a great climate, and tremendous outdoor opportunities for our tourists. We're close, within two hours of large urban areas which people want, with easy access to get there, including two airports to take you anywhere in the world. Have one of the best broadband infrastructures in the state. Ninety-one percent of our homes and businesses have access to at least one gigabyte of internet service. We have a strong culture and values embodied in our many churches and civic organizations. Our arts abound, and we have invested in our town through the water and the streetscape project. All this gives us the opportunity to attract more visitors, to become a retirement and second-home mecca, and to become a hub for telework and internet-based businesses and entrepreneurs. What we lack is a unifying organization to be focused on telling our story to the world and to support our existing industries, agriculture, service businesses, and merchants to be more successful. Must work to ensure our community is economically viable and growing. Cannot achieve this by chance. Must purposely manage the process, and we believe what you will see tonight is the best path forward to allow us to utilize our resources better, to focus on what is required to do, and achieve accountable results. I believe that we are at a crossroads to decide to make the future of Allegheny County and its citizens better and brighter. Will take the collaboration of all of us, the town, the county, our businesses and citizens, to make it happen. There's always the potential of fear of growth and change. What I will submit to you is that the fear of stagnation and decline is far greater. Now, I'll turn it over to Zach Bariclo to take you through our presentation and a summary of the work that's been going on now for 10 months. Thank you all very much for this time, and we look forward to taking any questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you very much. Zach?
Evening. Good to be with y'all. It's good to be with people. I haven't seen people in a long time in real person. So, as Ricky mentioned, we had a group that started meeting. Actually, I was looking back at my notes. It's actually July of last year, so we're about a year from when we first started getting together. This group started convening. This group was made up of town, county, TDA, SRC, chamber, BDC, and community college representatives. And the purpose of those convenings, which took place many times, over many months, over many hours per meeting, many of you were in those, was to look at our five-year economic development plan. We had a plan that was put in place in 2015, and all of us were curious how we were tracking with that plan, how it was going. We had about, it was a little over 80 objectives that were identified. I'm sorry, I feel like I've got my back to half of the group here. We had a little over 80 objectives that were sketched out in that economic development plan, and we were all curious how that was going. And one of the things that we realized pretty early in our discussions was that nobody really owned the plan. There wasn't one organization that really owned that plan and that was tracking how it was going. And we also had some obvious progress and some obvious challenges with implementing the plan. So, what we decided to do was spend the next several months, the next several meetings, kind of peeling back the layers and looking at our situation there. And so, what I'm going to share with you is a fraction of the total dialogue that took place, but five observations and one big conclusion. So, Michael, if you don't mind, go to the next one. So, one first observation is that, let's see if it goes. Maybe if you just click, I might, there you go. All right. There you go. So, the first observation is that we have several agencies that contribute to economic development in Allegheny. It's certainly not just a county thing or a town thing. We have the county schools, we have the community college, we have the co-op extension, we have the SRC, and the TDA, and the chamber. There's a variety of agencies that contribute here. And if you go ahead to the next one, there, Michael, whoop, back. Back one. There's no unifying accountable organization that was in place to track the progress of this plan. So, that was the big observation that we had around the table. There's no one that we could go to and ask and have them say, "Yep, we're on track. We're running right down the list. Here's our dashboard. Here are our success indicators. Here's how it's going." We didn't have that. And that's not to say that there wasn't progress, but we didn't have a singular dashboard or accountable agency to look at it. So, how are all of these disparate agencies pulled together and aligned and aimed at economic development? If you go to the next one there, sorry, that's giving us trouble. The third observation that we had was that there's no one organization supporting the economic success of all. So, this was a significant one, and we spent a lot of time on this. We actually mapped out and compared and contrasted the missions of the Chamber of Commerce, the SRC, the BDC, the TDA, and the marketing program, and we analyzed who they were there to serve and how their services overlapped, trying to identify where we have kind of duplicitous services. And what we found was that the Chamber of Commerce was sort of limited in scope by its member focus. It's a membership-based organization, so by its statutes, it's supposed to provide unique services to its members and not necessarily the community at large. The SRC was limited in scope in its focus on Sparta and the Main Street corridor, and not necessarily merchants that are out in the community, not beautification projects or special activities that were out in the community. So, it was limited in scope. The TDA doesn't have any staff, as you know. It's just exclusively an occupancy tax grant-making institution. The BDC is a wonderful space and a wonderful asset that we have in our community, but has very limited staff and services. Furthermore, we identified that there were five or six unique groupings, and this is what you see on the screen here, five or six unique groupings of economic drivers in our community that, there was, none of which were served by a single entity or, in some cases, any entity arguably. So, our existing industry, our merchants, our tourism-related businesses, our farmers, our entrepreneurs. That question of, that came up in the group was, who is it in our community that should be going to our existing industry and saying, "Thanks for being here. What do you need? How do we support you in remaining here and adding jobs to our community? Who is that person?" And that kind of brings us to the next one, as we looked at the question of who. Had some tough realities to look at. We have had a lot of turnover in key agency leadership roles and in direction in recent years. Just to share a few of those stats, so since adopting this five-year economic development plan, we've had five chamber directors in five years. We've had five SRC coordinators in five years. We had a marketing manager who lasted about 14 months. Have a BDC role, BDC director role that was moved from full-time to less than half-time. So, we have some turnover issues that we've seen over these years, and we spent a good amount of time diagnosing those. We tried to at least, hear from some of the folks that had been in those roles and understand what was going on. And that's a much bigger conversation for another time, but one dimension of that turnover that became very clear, which is our next touch point here, is that we have several small pots of funding spread across several small organizations and programs. Not only makes it difficult to, for one agency to sustain and fuel its work, but it diminishes the combined impact of all of them. So, here's where our months of dialogue kind of ended up. If you'll go ahead there, Michael. After extensive discussion, we recommended considering the combination, combining the Chamber of Commerce and the SRC. Just looking at the amount that they share in common in their missions and the amount of resources that they're struggling with. We discussed combining budgets, combining staffing structure, combining board of directors, combining their collective support networks, combining the outreach and communication and committee coordination that each of them entails, and ultimately combining and adding a focus on economic development. And ultimately, we've referred to this new organization as Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development. And there is consensus on both SRC and the Chamber of Commerce boards to move in this direction, which would eventually mean dissolving those two organizations, the Chamber of Commerce and SRC, and forming this new entity called the Chamber, Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development. So, I'm going to touch on kind of what that looks like next, if you'll go ahead. So, in terms of what our objectives are in combining the organization, forming this new one, well, first and foremost, this answers the question of what unites those disparate agencies, what unites those disparate efforts around economic development. This Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development, or Allegheny CED for short, this becomes that central hub and that coordinating force to pursue the short-term and long-term economic viability of the community and to align and track efforts. Go ahead there, Michael. Thank you. Beyond that kind of high-level objective, these were some of the things that became our driving logic for this move and for this change. And I know that's hard to read, it's kind of small print, but I'll just run down this list. We want to ensure the long-term viability of the entire Allegheny community and not be limited in scope to just members or just the downtown corridor. So, that was one driving force. We want to be able to proactively support current businesses countywide. We want to be able to innovatively pursue targeted economic development strategies and align currently disparate efforts toward a clear objective or objectives. We want to broaden and diversify the support and engagement from key stakeholder groups, such as merchants, farmers, industry, entrepreneurs. We want to combine resources available to attract and retain agency talent. We want to be able to afford good talent in our community because it deserves it. We want to partner more strategically with specialized agencies. So, those are the ones kind of around the circle there on efforts, and I'll speak to that a little bit more later. And we want to better utilize our community assets and access outside resources more effectively. And especially in this day and time, there are resources that are available to us in recovery from COVID, federal, state, private, public, and we want to take advantage of those resources and make sure that Allegheny County is benefiting from those. Head to the next, Michael. So, these would be the primary focus areas of the Allegheny CED. I'll just share that this looks like a fairly simple breakdown, but like most things, it required several hours of debate and discussion. And what we did, the genesis of this sketch and the next slide, is we asked ourselves what functions need to be in place in our community in order to be effective in supporting our current businesses and pursuing economic viability. And this is what we came up with, and these would be kind of the primary roles of this organization. So, first, economic development and planning and execution. So, the strategic planning process, targeted investments, data tracking, progress reports. Stakeholder engagement. In building that five-year economic development plan, many of you were part of that planning process. It was a really fruitful planning process that brought together a lot of different perspectives in the community. It's just a shame that we only do that every five years. And I think that was another theme that came out of our discussions was, we need to build in that stakeholder engagement during the five years. And so, what we're recommending is that this organization have standing ag councils, industrial councils, merchant councils, tourism, and entrepreneur-related councils, and then ultimately build a network of Allegheny ambassadors and supporters in the, about the five years. Marketing is intuitive enough, and you're familiar with what we have in place right now with the marketing space, the website, the visitor center, the visitor magazine, community calendar, and then any kind of advertising and external outreach. And then events, there's a lot of different events that we have going on, and I think this one, like the others, will evolve over time in terms of what events are kind of housed and coordinated by this entity, but certainly the Heritage Festival, Music on Main, parades, ribbon cuttings, other special events would go under this. So, these would be kind of the primary functions. And I guess just one side note about this organization is that we would be forming this as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It would not be a member-based organization. It would be a nonprofit serving the community itself. So, it would be eligible to receive donations and grants. Head, Michael, to the next. These are the two buckets that we felt like really shouldn't be primarily under the Allegheny CED, but are really kind of partnering mechanisms. We already have a community college, we already have a county school system that is working on workforce development. So, this entity would be a partner in that. In terms of youth programs, internships and apprenticeships, and custom workforce training, small business center training, the startup Allegheny program, and the leadership Allegheny programs, those would all be in partnership with these entities here. And then infrastructure and incentives as well. So, leveraging our broadband, looking at office space and teleworking and coworking spaces with the BDC. The beautification is in partnership with the town. Any kind of tax credits and opportunity zone financing would be in partnership with whoever is most appropriate. So, these would not necessarily reside exclusively under this entity. Go ahead to the next there, Michael. At the moment, this is the staffing structure that we've discussed, is having a president overseeing the organization, a VP of Marketing, Operations Manager, and Visitor Center Coordinator. So, this would be the full-time staff dedicated to it, and if you'll go to the next, Michael. These are the actions in progress in forming the Allegheny CED. It's a long list, and I'll just kind of give you the highlights, but you'll have a copy of this later to review. These are things that are underway, looking at forming the 501(c)(3) with the bylaws and rules of conduct, et cetera. Our boards, SRC and Chamber of Commerce boards have met, the executive boards have met, looking at what the board structure would look like and who would want to be part of this new organization, looking at the vision and the mission and the values and the goals, and fleshing those things out, hiring a president ultimately to lead the organization, and working on building out communications plans and a one- to three-year strategic plan for the entity itself. So, these are, those are some highlights, but you can look down that list and read through some of those as well. Our goal, this entity, is to have it stood up by September 1st, which, with all of the unknowns in our world right now, timeline may change, may evolve, we'll see how it goes, but we want to keep moving forward with it, and our boards are very supportive of moving the process forward at a swift pace. If you go to the next, the sources of funding for this entity basically just look the same as they've always looked for the SRC and the Chamber of Commerce. Really, the only additional item on there is that last one, the private investor support slash investor support. And this is an opportunity that we think exists with this new entity, moving it to become a 501(c)(3). That there is a tax benefit to contribute to the entity. It is in support of the whole community, not just a subsection of the community economically. And we anticipate that this may actually generate more of revenue base than the member-based model that the Chamber of Commerce previously had or currently has. That's really the only distinction here. Those were the main points that I had, and I'll invite Ricky to come back up and kind of close us out here, and then we'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Zach, for that overview of a lot of work, and we very much think, and as this says, this is the best path forward together for sustained economic viability and growth, leading to a brighter future for our citizens and our children. We talk a lot about that children piece. I've got two grandchildren. Born here, they're going to be raised here, and I want them to be able to stay here in a vibrant economy, one that they can enjoy many, many years and raise their children here. And if we don't do this now, if we don't take the effort, work together, all of us, to put all of our energy and resources together at a time when it's ripe for a place like Allegheny County to do well, we're going to look back and go, "We missed it. We missed it." This is about our children. This is about having a place that they can grow up, come back, if they go off to school, work, and enjoy this beautiful, beautiful place that we have. That's what our job is as the adults in the room, to provide that kind of growth and economic vitality that will allow that to happen. If we don't do it, then shame on us. Now is the time. We've been working on this for a long time. This isn't the work of one person or two people. This was not built in a cloakroom hidden from people. This was worked on by many different people representing all these organizations that said, "You know what? We do need to come together. We do need to put all of our efforts and energy and resources together to make this happen now for our community." We talked to all of you in the past 10 months. This is not news to you all, but what we are needing is for all of us to put our hands in the middle and say, "Let's do this." Thank you for the financial support that each of your budgets have already presented for these organizations that can be merged into this new organization. Direction we think is right and is good for our community, but what we need is all of us to say, "Now, we're going to support this, that we're going to work together for the benefit of everybody in our county." Yes, it will be change, and I don't know exactly what it will look like, but I know there's also change that'll come no matter what we do. That's just life. But we can control the change that's in front of us to be positive, or we can control and let the negative come to us. I submit to you, it's time to move. This is a great organization. What we know now is that this plan can work. Is this plan going to be exactly like it's on this piece of paper? I don't know. It will evolve and change as the world evolves and changes with us. If we don't have an organization that wakes up every day with the leadership that we've got, and we've got the marketing person, Lisa Bodden, she's going to do a great job. We've got the operations person, Karen O'Leary, was born in fire in the chamber, and she's going to do a great job. Vicky Parlier is going to do a great job in the visitor center. It's back up and running. We got to recruit the president, and we will do that, and we'll get the president. But that team will get up every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, thinking, "How I can make Allegheny County better and grow and be successful?" And as Zach mentioned earlier, there's going to be a lot of money, because even before COVID, COVID, there was this urban-rural divide that existed, but finally, the urban said, "I got to help the rural, or we'll get everybody pulled down." Those funds are going to be out there, and COVID's going to make them more so, and if we don't have somebody looking for them every single day, we're going to miss them. What I would suggest to you all, if we don't get on the front end of this, we're going to miss the opportunity. This isn't about catching up. We got to be on the front end. Thankfully, we started this 10 months ago, almost a year ago, thankfully, because we're not now talking about, "Let's plan this," we're talking about, "Let's execute this." I will ask all of you in this room tonight, those that are elected officials, those that serve at the county and the town, and those of us that are working in this community, to all come together and pledge to each other that we're going to make this happen, that we're going to make this community a bright star in western North Carolina and all of North Carolina. Thank you so much for listening to us. We'd be glad to take any questions that you have, and we look forward to your unending support of this organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick and Zach, and we'll open it up now in a roundtable discussion if anybody has any questions.
You are aware by doing away with the Chamber of Commerce, you may be losing all your money from the TDA.
We are not aware of that, and so I don't know what statute that is.
Let me read to you from, this is session law 2011-170. "The authority shall use at least two-thirds of the funds remitted to it under this subsection to promote travel and tourism in Allegheny County and shall use the remainder for tourism-related expenditures." By your renaming, I don't think Mr. Folwell is going to consider that we can't separate it. Now, if you, if the economic development, if it comes about, if you request funds from the TDA for promote travel or tourism or an event, that would be kosher. But there's also a problem where, when this act was, or when the law was passed, all the money went to the Chamber of Commerce, and then we established the TDA. So, we're going to, you know, I'm not saying that you can't do it, but there is a possibility that you will lose those funds. At the most, you're only going to have access and competing with all the other events in the county.
Correct.
And for the promotion of events, we've got two-thirds of the funds for that. And then tourism-related expenditures, that would be on, increase the use, well, net proceeds of the tax are designed to increase the use of lodging facilities, meetings facilities, or convention facilities in the county, or to attract tourists or business travelers to the county. The term includes tourism-related capital expenditures. Now, the challenge on this, the TDA, if you are going to have a travel-related expenditure, they are going to have to determine whether the Fiddler's Convention takes precedent over your request. It's going to be individual requests. If we can get a positive feedback from Mr. Folwell on the occupancy tax. Big thing that I, hurdle that I'm seeing right now is, calling this the economic development, that doesn't meet the guidelines of this session law.
Erwin, did you identify?
You better identify which Mr. Erwin you're speaking to.
John Erwin.
There's two of us, and we're both hard-hairied.
This is actually something that I didn't mention, but part of the spark in this conversation was looking at our five-year economic development plan. Part of the spark and kindling of this conversation was actually attending the North Carolina Economic Development Association Annual Conference this past summer, and one of the things that they were bringing to the table was this recommendation, which really cuts across the entire nation, to look at destination marketing organizations, so your Chamber of Commerce-type organizations, and your so your Chamber of Commerce-type organizations, and your economic development organizations, and all of the kind of impact analysis and resource utilization research that they had done was suggesting that it just doesn't make sense for us to continue to have two separate entities. And this is true for big cities, and it's especially true for small towns. And so they were really encouraging communities to look at exactly what we were looking at and saying, do we really need to sustain two organizations, or are these missions so kind of lock and step, or should be lock and step, that we should combine resources on it? And so Winston-Salem actually did this recently, where they combined their Chamber of Commerce with their economic development organization. So I just wanted to share that as a, I guess, a point of benchmarking from around the state and around the country.
The problem that I foresee in this regard, you can't come up with any happy and glad since the legislature in the state of North Carolina's got to change this. This law must be changed. If you're going to, if, and I don't know how Mr. Falwell will look at it, we're going to have to present this, that question to the Office of the Treasury, since they supervise the occupancy tax. I can see that there are, you could make a grant for a specific event for marketing or capital improvements. The sticking point from the outside is going to be the name, economic development. This is for tourism. The occupancy tax is for tourism.
Right.
Period. So that will come up. As far as funding, we aren't the federal government. We do not print our own, we don't print our own money. We've got challenges that the people in the audience are not aware of right now. They've popped up in the last two to three weeks, and they're major, and they're expensive. Matter of fact, I'm going to use this to cut out the funding for the authentically Allegheny. I'm going to use this session law to do what I can to cut out the Chamber of Commerce, the SRC funding, because that can come from the TDA. That's why the TDA was there. I've already talked to my fire departments, I've made them aware of this for their events whenever we get out of COVID-19. So, you know, the county cannot continue going after pine the sky, praise Jesus, here comes a dead-gone tourism down, and we are all going to be saved. If you want to get money out of tourists, you keep them here. Only thing we've got to keep them here is fill their tanks full of gas, grab a hamburger, maybe a cold beer, and they drive on. We have no, don't have any tourism that's going to go to the farm and milk a cow so they can say they milked a cow. I agree, we do need coordination to try and develop this county, but this county is its own worst enemy. EE Small Engine came and begged to buy that Martin Marietta building. We turned them down. They only invested $50 million in West Jefferson because that's where they went. They paid the salary of the professors. They provide the CNC equipment so they're taking train their employees. It was ours. We told them we didn't want it. Reason why? From the chairman that turned it down. When those big companies leave, we, it hurts too bad. Well, if you don't want to bring a big company in, I guess you never will. But we've also turned down $17.95 starting wage at a GE factory where you will max out at just about $40 a hour. Doing so well over there, they're hiring 75 people, and they can't find people. But don't get me started on Interstate 77 that was coming through Allegheny County and was moved, or Interstate 74 that was coming through Allegheny County and it was moved. Sari County ought to give us a thank you note every year for that. You know, I would love to develop this place. Bobby loves to say that we are getting constant requests from companies that are looking to move. Looking for an existing build of 100,000 square feet, four-lane highway, railway access and gas. We are a rural community, yes. We're primarily a farm community, but, not the federal government, we can't print money, and we aren't the Lord Jesus coming down and parting the water so that we can have four-lane highways tomorrow. Chairman, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. More questions?
Chairman, I have one council member who would like to speak over here. I'll have to get up to the mic up by our mill so we can get it on. They can't hear you on TV though.
I think the combining the organizations is a fine idea. As Mr. John Irwin's pointed out, there may be problems with that. I am, my only concern is, main concern, not my only concern, is taxpayers as Sparta who elected me. Hear me?
I need to.
Are they going to hear me?
Take your mask off.
I'm not supposed to, the governor told me to wear it. So anyway, the taxpayers, and I really enjoyed what Mr. Brown said about achieving accountable results. Think the taxpayers are going to be interested in hearing that. Our concern is the ROI. I think everybody is familiar, Mr. White, return on investment. We run Sparta as a business. We're not the federal government, not borrowing Johnny's term, but very appropriate. The federal government takes tax money and funnels it to special interests. We don't intend to do that. We intend to run this as a business with our main focus serving the town residents because they're paying the taxes. Okay, you've already touched on the stumbling, I guess we could say, of the Chamber of Commerce. That's already been documented. Brian made us aware of that when we were having our interviews. Five directors in five years, ineffectual, now plan to reorganize, do away with the chamber. That all makes perfect sense. However, as is true in history, before we go forward, we have to step backward just one step. The town of Sparta, and these figures were presented, I won't go over each and every one, they were presented to me by Ms. Peggy, our finance officer. The town of Sparta has invested $104,283.94 in the Chamber of Commerce in the past five years. It came directly from the taxpayers' pockets. Wasn't any grants or anything like that. That included an annual allocation, bathroom supplies, building maintenance, cleaning, and a, in 2018, 19, a $30,178 renovation. This year, just recently, this past month, we voted for $2,500 for further repairs. Now, we have a building there that is 2,574 square feet. At an average, a conservative average of $4 per square foot, that building would rent and bring the town $10,296 a month. That building brought the town in the last five years $1,200. If you add what we've given them upfront, what we have given them in the form of rent, that is, the town taxpayers have spent $155,713.94 on the Chamber of Commerce. Only to be told at this juncture, well, you know, it wasn't working. Okay, and that's good. But where, when do we get a return? What, are we supposed to just tell the town taxpayers, just eat that $155,000? It was a good idea, but it didn't really come together. We're sorry, but, you know, we appreciate you giving us some money, but we didn't handle it real well. So you go on to the authentically Allegheny, which you've already touched on. Correct me if I'm wrong, any of you folks from the county, the initial setup, the marketing was $150,000, $175,000. You've given authentically Allegheny $50,000 in 18, 19, $55,000 in 19, 20, and $50,000 in 20, 21, as per the county's finance office. So we're looking at $300,000 that's taxpayers have dumped into authentically Allegheny, only to be told, again, it's a good idea, we had a lot of turnover. Couldn't seem to get the right people, couldn't seem to get the right people in the chamber, you know, and y'all are trying to correct this, I get that. But what about $300,000? Just going to write that off, just going to ask taxpayers to eat it? So you're going to reorganize, you're going to get good people, you're not going to have any more, for lack of a better term, you're not going to have any more personnel debacles on these organizations. You're going to get good people, they're going to know what to do, and you're going to get a good economic development person. But it's, how am I going to go to my taxpayers and say, these nice folks that have been involved in these failed programs? Now, Zach, you mentioned SRC, the chamber, the BDC, all of these folks have gone together to form a new organization, but these are the, of course, you've learned from these snafus, learned from these stumbles, so that's good. But how can I justify to the taxpayers, we're going to keep dumping money in these things, and we think this time it's going to work? And not to oversimplify, but how do we have a guarantee of accountable results? And Mr. Brown, you said, nothing's certain, nothing's certain. But where I'm going with this is, and of course, we have the SRC, Karen works very hard, they do a wonderful trunk and treat, do our parade. I can remember back in the old days, we all got together, we volunteered, we got the parade together. We would hire professional floats, and we would go around and ask the merchants to pay so much per float. And we would have five or six professional floats. The whole parade was put on by volunteers. It didn't cost anybody anything. The merchants put in the money if they wanted to be on a float. Private people, you know, had their own floats. So those things are good. But we've got another $100,000, give or take, in SRC over the past five years. So my concern is, how can we justify a continual level of funding when we don't have any ROI right now, that I can go back to my taxpayers and say, this is where your money went? That's my only concern.
Thank you all for those questions. Anybody else?
I would like to.
Please.
You did mention measurable results.
Yes.
Accountability. What kind of thoughts do you have in that regard as going on currently?
There is a myriad of statistics that we would need to measure, you know, from a standpoint of sales tax revenues, property tax values, tax revenues, employment, job paid hourly rates, numbers of new businesses, numbers of new residents, improved tourism, et cetera, et cetera, sales tax increases, all those kinds of things, amongst others, will be the kinds of data that you should demand of this organization. On both of these counts, yes, there have been investment in the chamber, there's been investment in authentically Allegheny, there has been investment in the SRC, there's been investment in other organizations. Those funds are sunk. It's been spent. We'll do all we can to move forward, to bring these accountable results to you all and the community, most importantly, to say, here's what we're doing. We understand that it's got to be accountable. We understand that if we're not doing the job to get those data points up, you shouldn't fund this. I can't do anything about what happened five years ago. I can't do anything about what happened 10 years ago. If we're dwelling on what happened 10 years ago, or what happened five years ago, and we didn't like what was happening, and we're not going to do anything for the future because we didn't like the past, then you're ensuring the past is going to be the future. And so what we're saying to you is, we understand accountable results. We understand that. Ask you to hang in there with us, to continue to invest, to see the results. We cannot take on a defeatist attitude to say, we're defeated, already defeated. We can't because of this, we can't because of that. That's just not a can-do attitude of a community that everybody's told me for the last 10 years, how can-do it is. You've got to have a can-do, we're going to do it. And yes, it should be accountable, make no mistake about that. And just like, you know, what Billy talked about, the $150,000 over these five years, that's a little over 1% of the town's budget, it's about $2 million. Is that about right, Brian? It's about a 1% that you spent on trying to economically develop your town. 1%, not five, not 10, not 20, 1%. We need to continue to do that.
Cardboard, we had to take the $2,000 and have another fund, so.
I'd argue that, that you're stretched, I get it.
And what we're saying is, it's going to be.
I understand.
And my point that we need private donations.
Yes.
That is the secret.
Yes. 100% right, Millie, I agree with that. In fact, the organization that has been set up in the past limited what we could get people to donate.
That is correct.
So this will unlimit what we can go to, go to large corporations, individuals who can, who will help fund this. What I would say to you, over the next two, three, five, and remember, this isn't going to happen next week.
No, it's not.
It's going to be a two, five, 10-year. And I could say to you that, shoot, I'm going to be dead possibly for this thing is truly implemented, and just not do it, because I might not see the end result, but I ain't going to do that, because I'm not going to let this community just linger along and decline and stagnate. We're going to invest, we're going to get people to invest, Millie, but we've got to get the organization together, and then we need to hold ourselves accountable to them too. If I put money in this, which I'm going to do, I'm going to want to return all my money. And we will try our best to do that. But we need you all to stay in with us until we can get this thing to where it can be more of a private-public than a public-private. That's where we want to go. Now, that's the attempt. Are we going to be successful? Shoot, I don't know. I don't know. But how many of you are going to just say, ah, because we haven't done it in the past, we can't do it in the future, so we're not going to do it? That's not the kind of attitude we ought to have. We will get it if we can. That's what we're going to work really hard to do. And so, and same thing with John, he brings up a very valid point about this notion of this, will this organization be able to take the money from the TDA? We need to answer that question. I don't know the answer to that question. We need to, we need to look. What we do know is that the Chamber of Commerce has been getting an allocation directly as occupancy tax, plus other marketing events that they have needed. Spend about $30,000 a year. We put a number up here that said 50. We were looking to get a little more allocation early on until we can make that switch, because I will tell you that this organization is going to be highly focused on tourism, because the best way to get people to know we're here is to come visit us. And we have, we have a lot of assets that people are going to want to come see. They might not stay here a week, a month, a year, but they're going to come visit us and see this beauty and go, you know what? They want to come back and stay here. Now, if we can't get that money because of some technical legal, and they won't allow us, we'll figure a different way. But what we've got to do is say, for now, let's assume we can get it. Let's fight to get it. Let's don't use a loophole that we might have found to not get it.
Mr. Chairman, the beauty of the occupancy tax, not one penny comes from an Allegheny citizen.
Right.
Taxes on people that are coming to visit. The problem that we've got is the legislation that was passed. Now, I agree, we need to check with the Secretary of Treasury. But I'm going to smack you right in the face right now, County Sparta. Got a requirement starting 1 July, it's called EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatch. You've been getting a free ride, the commissioners, and I'm going to be bringing it up. We're going to the town because we've got to hire four people. That's going to increase your budget. What are we looking at, Mr. County Manager, in estimate? Four more people, they are specialized, 35, which means it'd be 50,000 a year. We're going to be coming to you for another 200,000, we're going to be looking at 200,000 for dispatch. If the commissioners agree with that, because not only that, we found out something. Courthouse is leaking like a sieve, major damage on the inside. They redid the courthouse 14 years ago. They never put a new roof over the front of the courthouse. That's where the leaks are coming from. County manager's fighting that right now. So we're going to have that expense. It just keeps on adding up and adding up. And we, as county commissioners, yes, I would love to improve this state on county. But right now, we've got infrastructure that has got to be taken care of. We are under the gun from the judges. And I have heard, and I have from many people, the judges can't force you to build a courthouse. Ask the people in Ash County how they got their courthouse. Ask the people in Independence, Virginia, how they got their courthouse. Their judges got fed up, condemned them, they built the courthouse and gave the bill to the county. We're fighting that. You know, granted, if we had the money, I would love to see it. I would love to see this come. With the obligations that we, as county commissioners, are facing right now. Lord, I've told the county manager, we need to start taking county funds and buying lottery tickets. If we win the big one, we might be able to get out of the hole.
John, can I respond to that?
Sure, go ahead.
Because I understand the challenges you all have. You had to cut, what, a million dollars out of your budget? For it to make the budget balance for this year? What I would say is that our challenge, like many other places today, it's a revenue challenge that we have. It's revenue. And if we do nothing to promote our county, if we do nothing to organize, to tell the story of our county, to get more visitors that stay in our hotels and bed and breakfasts, and eat in our restaurants, and drink at the establishments, et cetera, et cetera. If we don't get them to come, if we don't get them to stay, and I will remind you all again that the purpose of your marketing agreement that you set up was to increase, enhance, and improve tourism while getting more people to live here. That's what we have to do, is to get more people to live here and work here. And our broadband is such an asset that we can get, we think, people to telework from here. Zach knows all about that. We can get telework from here. We can get entrepreneurs. But if we don't have somebody that gets up every day that works on it, we're not going to get increases in property values. So what's going to happen, John, in my view, is if we don't do this and bet on our future, the challenges are going to get greater and greater because the services that are required are either going to be stopped, or to pay for them, you're going to have to keep raising taxes and raising taxes and raising tax rates to get the money. And your property values are going to stay flat, your sales tax are not going to grow commensurate with others around you that are doing these things. And it would be not in the best interest of the county not to spend more money. I'm not asking you to spend more money. Y'all said you'd do $50,000 for authentically Allegheny, which is important to come in this organization to help fund it, et cetera. That's all we're asking. Stay the course for three years. And at the end of three years, if it's not done, pull the money. We would see progress being made, and to Millie's point, we hope to be able to see more private money coming in, more private money coming in, larger corporates that would, instead of giving us $399, like they've been giving the Chamber, give us 3,000, 5,000, 10,000 to do this very thing. Because if we're all into improving the economic prosperity of this county, we're all making an investment in our future. I want to make that investment personally. I am making that investment personally, today, by investing in this county by what I have to pay you more taxes. We've got to do that broadly, and do it successfully, and do it accountable. If we just say, because of our problems, we can't do anything? You're assuring the problem will get greater. And I appreciate the problems. I appreciate the challenges that the county and the town are facing. But if we don't do something like this, challenges will get greater, worse, and ultimately unmanageable, because you're not going to be able to do basic services without getting way high taxes. Because you're going to raise taxes to get the services. That's just reality, I think, isn't it?
I ask you a question.
Yes.
What do we tell the treasurer of the state of North Carolina that told us on the 19th of December that if we didn't increase our reserve funding, that they would assume the management of this county?
I think what you can tell them, John, is just, we understand that, and we're making what we hope to be smart investments in our future that will help us raise the revenues of our county, and not be dependent upon cutting services and cutting services and cutting services to where the county does not get what it needs to get. It is a double-edged sword in running any business. Got to have revenues rising and constantly be managing expenses. But if all you do is cut expenses, cut expenses, cut expenses, and don't think about investing for the future in an accountable way, you're going to run out of gas. We've got to do both, and you're doing it, and congratulations. The town has done it, congratulations. We've got to work to get the prosperity of our county rising. We've got to help our citizens get better jobs, have better opportunity. If we don't take that effort and say, look, we're going to lock hands and do it, there are no certainties in anything. We're going to try our best. We're going to try our best. I mean, I'll go back and just say, we appreciate what y'all did with the hospital. Our lead gift to get the hospital going. If we had just said, we can't do it, and they said, raise $6 million? We said, we can, and we did, and what do we have today? You've got a hospital that's still open. If it had not been taken by Wake and Hugh Chatham, we would not have a hospital today. Guaranteed, guaranteed, not a maybe, but guaranteed there would be no hospital here. And then what would that have done to the economic potential of this place? So we said we could, and we did. What I would say to you tonight is, let's say we can, and we do. Not find ways to say, we can't. Not find ways to say, oh, I don't know about that. But let's lock hands, hold each other accountable. Hold me, hold you accountable to make this place a better place for all of us to live. Downtown merchants, our county merchants, our agriculture, our industry. Zach mentioned this earlier. The most important industry that exists in this county today is the ones we got. We need to be more engaged with them than ever before to understand what are their challenges? What do they need? What kind of help do they need? So that they will stay and maybe add three or four jobs, and maybe three or four jobs. Can you imagine if Rocky Prophet woke up tomorrow morning and said, I'm moving everything to Alabama? I can get more labor, I can get more productivity, I'm going to Alabama? That'd be a bad day for us, 100-plus jobs. What happened to Pioneer Clips? But we're not listening to them. Nobody's saying, what's happening? What can I do to help us? This is our opportunity to come together and hold each other accountable for economic growth, prosperity. For our children, folks. For our children. That's our responsibility. To say we can't and to say, oh, I'm defeated because we're this or that, that's just wrong, in my view. You may prove not to be able to pull this thing up now, but it won't be because we don't try. It's not because we don't do our very doggone best for the future of this place and all of us. And this ain't just for a few. This is designed to help us all, to help our entire county to be better.
Any more questions from your side?
Anybody on the council have anything if they'd like to ask or comment on at this time? Do you have anything that you'd like to?
No.
We're good.
Rick, I've got a comment or two. I've listened to what John had to say, and I think that his challenge is a legal challenge that you need to address, the town needs to address, or the county needs to address. That's not for an individual.
Exactly right.
Individual person to address, it's for, it's illegal. I agree that we're in financial, we're not as bad off as we were last year. And I would like to thank Michael Carter for that. He's done an outstanding job turning around our finances in a short time. We don't print money. Money's hard to come by in this small community. I have no idea what Millie was saying, but I have an idea that it was about raising taxes or something. I'm not much of a fan on taxes, but we did pass the fire tax, which was a big reason we were able to save so much money on the county budget. I've always said, what's good for the county is good for the town, what's good for the town is good for the county. This plan, I first heard about it, had some reservations. I still have some reservations, like benchmarks. I'd like for you to show me that this program has moved from here to here to here. And if those benchmarks, or those benchmarks are not met, then that's a roadblock.
Absolutely.
This is not going to happen overnight. I think a year from now, which I think you've got the money to last at least one year, that should give both the town and the county a little bit of knowledge as to how good this program's going.
Yes, sir.
I'd look at the last four or five years, the things that have happened in the town and in the county. 21 was widened. That's a big help to get people into the county. Streetscape is coming along, and that's going to be a beautiful, beautiful asset to the town and the county. We're moving forward. We can't go backwards. Water system that was put in, that was, that really helped the town and the county. That's another improvement. We've got new bridges coming all through the county. That helps our infrastructure. Just read a report today that I met is, has already sold eight homes this year, and they have eight more homes under contract. 16 homes. That's a big turnaround in six months, actually five months out there. I think the county is moving forward. We can't sit on our laurels and do nothing. I hope in a year from now, you come back and say, we moved from here to here. That's what I look forward to. Know there's an expense involved. I don't like to gamble with taxpayers' money, but this is a little bit of a gamble. I think you've put a team together that's going to have some positive impact on the county. I'm just waiting to see what happens next year. And if there's anything that I can do, you know, just holler at me.
Do that, and absolutely, I'm in 100% in agreement with you. We have to have the benchmarks, and we have to be making progress toward those benchmarks. And we look at it in a year, in two, in five, in 10, to keep a steady progress on making these things happen. And, you know, a lot of people find us by chance. What this is about doing is telling the story to widen the funnel, to get more people to see the opportunities that are here. All those infrastructure things that you talked about, the broadband that we have here. Zach has a slide that is, if we had it on here, it'd really open your eyes. It shows Allegheny, Ash, and Wilkes, a little crescent in a dark blue. That is the best infrastructure you can have. When you look at the rest of North Carolina, you see a little blue in Charlotte, little blue in Wake County, Orange County, Durham County, little blue in Greensboro, but not as sustainably blue as we have. We have as good an infrastructure and broadband. COVID is going to make telework a thing that was being dabbled in to be more. You have that opportunity. We have the internet that can lead to entrepreneurs starting internet-based businesses, like our tire business, depends of $12 million business in this little town, internet-based. We can find more people like that. But we can't just think they're going to find us. We've got to tell the story to get them to come here and have a compelling story about why Allegheny County is a place to come, bring jobs, bring families. We didn't talk about this at all tonight, but we've got a good school system here. Got a superintendent that's engaged on many fronts. It's, we've got a lot of things going our way. Now, it's about putting them together in a focused way with the energy and the resources to make it happen. And if we don't succeed, it will not be because we have not tried. It will not be because we did not put our best foot forward.
Let me add one more thing to finish up for me. Years I worked at the pot factory. My mentor was Jack Martin. He told me, people are not going to come to Sparta to buy what we're selling. I was in the Woodcraft division. We have to sell Sparta craft, we have to sell our product to the world. He sent me to California, he sent me to Canada. They didn't come here, we went there.
That's what this is about.
We have to sell ourselves. And I think one thing that a lot of people look at tourism and say, there's not that many tourism. There's not that many dollars that come in. I disagree. There's a lot of dollars that come in. One thing, this group of commissioners were trying for the quarter cent sales tax. It would have passed two times ago, that was almost $200,000 a year extra that we would have received. $200,000, that's almost $650,000, almost $700,000 from the first time we tried to get the quarter cent sales tax. You spend $4, you spend an extra penny. See, everybody in this county that goes out of here to shop in another North Carolina county, almost every other county has that quarter cent added on. We get that quarter cent, that may help us keep down our property taxes. You know, you look at $500,000, $600,000, that's a lot of money.
Yes, and that's all the kind of things that we're going to have to do and have to be supportive of, and show the value and the benefit of that, amongst many other things that you all will come up with. But just to that point, here's a whole list of success indicators. We don't need to have, there's one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, there's 30 of them. Maybe 30 of them is too many, but we need to look at this list and determine what are the key ones that we need to do. And then track them quarterly, yearly, and keep saying, are we making progress on this list of things that is important?
And just one, I just wanted to share that. Evans, just to your question about success indicators, that we have... that we, we have started on that discussion. But I think the other key there is, we want to get, I'm sorry, uh, we want to get that ag council, that entrepreneur council, that industrial council around the table to talk about these. What are, what are the indicators of success? Let's have those minds at the table as well, and have the various industries that exist in our community telling us what success looks like, as well as representatives from the town and the county getting in on that. So, that's the only thing I have.
Other question?
My only comment is, I've been involved with things for the whole year. Uh, I, I think it's a great plan. It's measurable. Uh, I think we get an answer from the state on the TDA. I think we also, the state would be impressed with what we've done in a short period of time on this year's budget, and what we're planning for next year. So, we've made a lot of progress. But if we don't find ways to get more people to pay our taxes, we're gonna be in trouble.
I think it's a fair plan. I've been involved with it for a good while, and it's a good fair plan, some good numbers there. And I don't care what your business, what you're selling. If you don't get your name out there, you ain't gonna sell nothing. You ain't gonna accomplish anything. It's, what better time could we have than right now? Roll this thing out with COVID-19, because we certainly need to get people coming back. And streetscape's about to wind up here in a month or two, and, and I think it's a good project. Everybody have anything else? We're gonna wind it up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, on behalf of Sparta Town Council, the, the town has done its part in trying to beautify the town of Sparta. And these guys right here, our council right here has spent many hours and many deliberations over this streetscape. So I'm challenging this group right here. If this is to go forward, the groundwork has been laid for you to have something to, to get out there and promote. This is the newest and brightest thing that we have in our county, right here, is coming up here in September. That's our due date. And once it's done, I'm hoping that all the merchants, those building owners up there will get on board before then, get it cleaned up, get it straightened up, do whatever they gotta do, and let's have a, a big promotion party for Sparta and Allegheny. The groundwork's there. Exactly right. Now, if we don't, if, I agree, if we don't utilize it right there, we missed the grand opportunity. Exactly right. But I want to see, that's my challenge to you guys right now, right off the bat. Talk about benchmarks, that's your first benchmark with, the way I see it. That's, that's your first benchmark. To that point, Mayor, and I agree. Uh, you know, one of the things that will leverage that is the historic district designation. Raise the money to get that survey done, to get the historic district downtown done, which will create opportunities for historic district tax credits, for people to invest, to buy and improve facilities here, up and down Main Street. We've got the Opportunity Zone that the federal government, which is another tax credit program that nobody's used yet here. We gotta learn more about it, tell more people about it, to help do exactly what you're talking about. And that's what this organization will do. We'll have people that get up every day figuring out exactly how to make that work, how to touch into grant opportunities, how to find out where monies are flowing, how to get out here and tell individuals and businesses to invest in our collective futures. And you are so right. And I mentioned earlier, that water streetscape project's big. We've gotta promote it and tell the world about it. Broadband's big. We gotta tell the world about it. All those attributes, infrastructure improvements. We gotta tell the world, come to Allegheny, and visit, but ultimately decide to stay here, because that will make the difference in the revenues that will make the county and the town improve, so that we can all be very happy about our future. So, we take the challenge. We understand what that gauntlet you've thrown down is, and we'll do all we can to say, look what we've done with it. And if we don't, if the organization's not successful, don't fund it. But what we're looking for tonight, is for you to say, you know what? We're on board with you. Understand the challenges, understand the accountability, but I'm on board with you. And if there are legal issues that have been found, we gotta giddle over them, but you gotta help us get over them. Not go, this is impediment to get it done. We want it to argue with us that it's the right thing to do, and if we can. And so, that's what we're looking for tonight. No money, understand the challenge of accountability. We need you to say, you know what? We're with you. We're gonna be there to help you and support you. Maybe not any more money, but to be there and help with your wisdom, with your guidance, and with your support to make this work.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. We certainly appreciate. It's been good, informative. Well, thank you. If there's nothing further. Yes, Ron? Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make one comment if-
One more comment.
Just, I, I thank them for coming. I thank all the folks that worked on this. What I see is, to some of Millie's and John's comments about the, some of the previous failed attempts, you know, that come from a level of thinking that was in place, and from a bunch of different groups kind of working in, in silos or in segments, and their own little focus. And with this, I just see an increased level of thinking that's gonna bring about, I believe, a much elevated level of results. And for that reason, I'm, I support you. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
I have a motion on my side for the Sparta Town Council to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor, show your hands, please. Sparta Town Council, adjourn.
Move, we adjourn.
Second motion, second. All in favor, raise your hand. We adjourn. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate. It's been a good meeting.